Fleming?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Messina?
Here.
Prumpler?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Okay, next please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so first of all, we have approval of minutes from our August 18th workshop by the Design Review Commission.
Move approval.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the August 18th minutes are approved. And then we have the September 8th Planning and Zoning Meeting, approval of minutes.
I would move that we approve the September 8th minutes.
So we have second motion for approval by Ingalls and second by Luttrell. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so those are approved. Okay, we'll try and talk louder. Can you maybe try and turn it up without creating any more feedback than you have to see if he can ramp it up a little bit? Sometimes it gets to the point where we hear ourselves echo back and forth when we're talking, so we'll try and find the happy mediums. Thanks for telling me that. Okay. Next, we have approval of the findings for PUD 3-15 and SP 4-15, the village at Orchard Ridge.
Make a motion that we approve the findings.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Messina and second by Fleming. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So those are approved. Staff comments?
Okay, good evening Commissioners. I am going to make my staff comments from the podium, too loud. Turn mine down. Because I'm going to introduce our new planner and then provide some other comments, so I'll move to the podium.
Okay, great, thank you.
So for those of you who have not met our new planner, Mike Behary joined us last month, and I want to ask him to come up. He came to us from Bloomington, Illinois, and has been a great addition to our team, so he will be making a presentation next month to the Planning Commission.
I'm the new planner, just would like to thank Hillary, Sean, and Tammy for making me feel welcome and part of the planning team. I'm just real excited to be here.
Welcome.
Well, Mike, I've heard some great things about you, so welcome to Coeur d'Alene. It's nice to have you here. Look forward to working with you.
It's great to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also wanted to talk to you, give you a quick update on the Neighborhood Compatibility Ordinance that was presented to us by the Fort Grounds Neighborhood and the workshop that was requested. So we are working with University of Idaho, their law department, so Stephen Miller is the professor that's heading that up. And so we've had a conference call with them to talk about their review, so we're expecting to get a memo from them by the end of this month documenting their findings and some recommendations. And we will schedule a workshop, it'll be Planning Commission, and we'll be inviting the City Council to join as well, and I'm looking at some possible dates in January. When I have those dates, we will let you know. Have to kind of coordinate through City Clerk and Council agendas as well. We'll probably also tag along on that discussion vacation rentals or short-term rentals because that is a pressing topic and it does have some effect on neighborhood compatibility, so look forward to that. And then our December meeting, we have three items, some of them are multi-part, so there's going to be one that's an annexation, PUD and subdivision. There will also be a PUD amendment and subdivision, and then a zone change. So it'll be a busy month. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hillary. Alright. Let's see, now is the point in the meeting for public comments. Now, if you're here for one of the hearings tonight, we'll have some time to testify when we're doing the hearing, but if anyone wants to address the commission on a matter of a general nature, you're welcome to come on up. Okay, seeing none? Any Commissioner comments? Alright, so we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is Kerr Properties LLC. This is a 34-acre property located at the southwest corner and the southeast corner of Prairie Avenue and Ramsey Road. This is a zoning prior to annexation from County Agricultural Suburban to Agricultural Suburban Commercial, excuse me, to City R8 and C17 Commercial. This is legislative and it's A-4-15. And I'll just tell you real briefly here on these two public hearings, these are both quasi-judicial, and the applicant will have, first we'll do the staff report, Tammy's going to do that, and then the applicant will have up to 30 minutes to make their presentation. And then we'll take testimony from the audience, and you have five minutes to testify and give us your opinion and viewpoints, and then there'll be a little bit of time after that for some rebuttal by the applicant. I don't have very many people signed up here, so I think probably most people are here for the next hearing, which is the one involving Pilgrims Market. But if you haven't done so, there's some signup sheets in the back, they're in that table back there, and you can just sign your name and address and put down if you'd like to testify or not on the hearing if you haven't done so. Okay, so we'll get the first one going here. Tammy?
Alright, thank you.
All ready to go? Thank you.
So this evening, we do have an annexation request. The applicant is Kerr Family Properties LLC. Subject, the annexation of approximately 34 acres, of which 9.8 acres are proposed to be zoned C17, and the remaining 24 acres to be zoned R8. The property's location is near the intersection of Prairie Avenue and Ramsey Road. So the decision point this evening is to provide a recommendation to the City Council regarding the appropriate zoning for the subject properties. So this is a location map, and this is the subject property outlined in the bold red. This black is the current city limits line. Here's another aerial photo of the site. This is Ramsey Road running north and south and Prairie Avenue. And Prairie Avenue is bordered, or excuse me, the subject property is bordered by two major roadways, Ramsey Road running north and south and Prairie Avenue running east and west, which is jointly under the jurisdiction of Post Falls Highway District and Lake's Highway District. So again, this is the subject property outlined here, Ramsey Road. And this portion of the property is currently going to remain in the county. This is the Elks Building and a few subdivisions. The existing county zoning map is showing this as agricultural suburban in the green and commercial zoning where the coffee stand exists. Proposed zoning for the property, C17 on this portion, just on the west side of Ramsey Road, and then commercial C17 here, with the remaining portion to be zoned R8, which is residential at eight units per acre. And this is a map showing the locations where we went out and took a few site photos. So site photo one was taken here, site photo two, three, and four. So this is looking east from the coffee stand. And this is looking south on the property, which is currently vacant. Looking west, and you can see the existing single-family that's going to remain in county. And then this is from Ramsey Road, looking southeast. So this evening, I'll go over the four findings required for you to make your decision. The first finding, B8, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. So this is the subject property, it's outlined in the yellow, and it is in transition, noted by the green. It falls within the Ramsey Woodland designation in the comp plan, and it is in transition. So the transition areas are where the character of the neighborhood is in transition and should be developed with care. Street network, the number of building lots, general land use are expected to change greatly within that planning period. And then here are the characteristics of Ramsey Woodland neighborhoods. That will include pedestrian and bicycle trails, parks just a five-minute walk away, neighborhood service nodes where appropriate, and multifamily and single-family housing units. So also included in your staff report on page 10 and page 11 are the comprehensive plan policies, goals, and objectives for you to look at. Finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are or not available and adequate for the proposed use. So I'll briefly summarize the comments submitted by staff. As far as sewer, the wastewater utility had no objections to the annexation as proposed, and the wastewater utility presently has the system capacity and willingness to serve the project. Public sewer is available at the end of Barbie Avenue and at the end of Aaron Avenue and Ramsey Avenue, which borders the annexation request. And those comments were submitted by Mike Becker, Utility Project Manager. The Water Department reported that there is sufficient capacity in the public water system to provide adequate domestic irrigation and fire service to the proposed 34-acre annexation. And the small parcel on the northwest corner, just west of Ramsey Road, falls within the service of Hayden Lake Irrigation District and is their responsibility to determine service capacity for the parcel. And that's where the coffee stand is currently located. As far as traffic concerns, the ITE Trip Generation Manual estimated the proposed residential portion of the area of annexation could generate approximately 1,833 daily trips. Those trips were based upon the requested R8 zoning designation. As far as the requested commercial zones, approximately 9.8 acres, without a defined use, traffic volumes could not be estimated at this time. And the actual trip based upon the developed site will vary, depending upon the size and number of additional buildings that may be developed in that commercial requested zone. And those comments were submitted by Chris Bates with the Engineering Department. And again, the proposed annexation is bordered by the two major arterial roadways, Ramsey Road and Prairie Avenue. And let's see, Prairie Avenue is jointly under the jurisdiction of Post Falls Highway District and the Lake's Highway District. Stormwater will be addressed as the area proposed for annexation develops. And the Fire Department submitted comments stating that access to the site, road width, surface maximum grade, turning radius, in addition to the fire protection, size of water main, fire hydrant, amount of placement, and any fire lines will be reviewed prior to the final plat- recordation or during the site development and building permit, utilizing the current adopted International Fire Code for compliance. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. And the subject property is relatively flat, and there are no significant topographical features. It appears to be suitable for the request. Finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. And the surrounding uses are residential and commercial, and the property to the east of the subject property is the Elks Club with an RV camping area that is located in the county. And the property north across Prairie Avenue is single-family residences, and the property to the south is also single-family. And again, there's a drive-through coffee establishment located on the southwest corner of Ramsey Road and Prairie Avenue. We talked a little bit about the existing land uses surrounding the subject property, this remaining in the county, the Elks Building here, an RV, and then single-family uses. And as far as zoning, the proposed zoning again is C17 Commercial and R8. There's C17 here and located here, and then some R8. And your staff report will include the zone page seven. The permitted by right uses in the C17 zoning district. And it also includes on page eight, the proposed R8 zoning district permitted uses that will be allowed. So the decision point tonight is the annexation of 34 acres into the city with a request to annex it in as C17 for 9.8 acres and the remaining 24 acres to be R8. So the Planning Commission must consider this request and make the findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. Thank you. Go ahead and leave the aerial photo up in case folks want to take a look at it. Any questions?
Any questions? Tammy, I see one from Commissioner Ingalls.
Thank you. Good report, thank you. Couple of questions, if you could go to the comp plan slide that you had, please. So help me understand, where is the, you know, the area that your cursor is on right there, the yellow line, that's out of the city, we're talking about annexation?
Correct.
Where is the area of city impact line? Is it not Prairie Avenue?
It is Prairie Avenue.
Okay, so this would be infill, and would it be kind of a fair statement, I guess, to say that the comp plan, since it describes this area as area in transition, that the comp plan really anticipates this coming into the city and filling up that ACI void, if you will, correct?
I would say so, yes.
Thank you. So, and really, it's really infill as far as the utilities are there and all that sort of thing, so as far as comp plan goes. If you could go now back to that other slide, I'm sorry, the one that you stopped on.
The very last slide?
Please. So you had one, excuse me, that had the zoning at R8. That one, thank you. The property to the south there, that's Legacy Place?
That's correct.
What, that is R5?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. When and if we were to approve the C17, does it lock into that exact boundary that you're showing there, or is it keyed just to acreage? Because I have a concern to see that C17 creeping south and then overlapping with it residential across the street. And I would like to have the latitude to have them move that around so it's not just one big long strip. Because I always fear when they put parking along that whole strip, and what an ugly entry to our city. So I just am concerned that that creep of C17, there should be a boundary, and we already have one established to the west in that residential area, and I'm seeing that creep as being somewhat undesirable. And so I don't mind approving an acreage-related C17, but I don't know that this is the perfect solution in that boundary, that we should maybe give some latitude to moving the residential and the C17 and make it a little more urban in feeling instead of being strip mall. Because that's what that forces, that kind of solution. And I'd love to see people not just think fence on Prairie, because golly, we've got houses on that, so we have to put a fence there, and then we have to have parking right out on the front of the street. And I really want to urge people to think this is our entryway again to our city. And so...
Well, to answer the first part of your question, what we're showing here on this slide and your annexation map included on page two does depict what they're requesting for annexation for the commercial. They don't really adjust it at this point.
Okay, so I would like them to consider that. That would be my urging, is that I see potential for this being a broader stroke than just slam it, you know, strip mall and fencing on the street residential.
And the applicant and his representative are both here to answer questions also.
Tammy, what is this, when you go down south on Prairie, what's the zoning down there for the next mile or so? Do you know, is it, are there any other C17 parcels? Or where is the next C17 parcel?
Let's see, Holiday Station Stores on the west side, further south, I believe that corner is a kind of a commercial node, that's zoned C17. And I believe Lake Forest West, kind of opposite of that, they've got that small portion on the corner of their property that's also a commercial node, C17.
And are they as big a parcels as this?
Gosh, I can't recall exactly. I think it's a couple acres for sure.
And then the zoning to the south of the R8 is R5?
I believe.
And to the east and west, what is the zoning there?
To the east, this is Heartland Subdivision, and it's an R17. And then this is R8. This is a C17 Plan Unit Development.
So you have some zoning that is more dense than R8? And then, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Tammy. Okay, Drew, are you representing the applicant? You just state your name and address, and I will swear you in.
Chairman Jordan, fellow Commissioners, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, great city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
Okay, Drew, and you swear the testimony that you're going to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir. Tammy covered a lot of what I wanted to cover, so I'll be a little bit brief. Again, here's the area that we're talking about tonight, Ramsey Road, Prairie Avenue. Everything you see in yellow up there is currently in the city of Coeur d'Alene. All of this stuff that's red on the north side of Prairie is currently in the city of Hayden. Commissioner Ingalls hit the nail on the head, and actually, I was going to, the point that I was going to make is this is somewhat, we would consider it an infill annexation, even though it's on the outskirts of the area of city impact, it's bound on the north side by the city of Hayden, completely, almost on the south and east by the city of Coeur d'Alene, so it really is somewhat of an infill annexation. I was going to go through some of the comprehensive plan stuff, but Tammy's covered that, there's a thorough analysis of it in the staff report, so I won't go over that again. But the property is in the transition area, it's in the Ramsey Woodland area, as Tammy had discussed. And here's the zoning that we're requesting. You can see the majority of it here is we're requesting for R8, and we have the strip here for C17, and then the commercial for C17. There is commercial here, this is a PUD overlay that's zoned C17. There's also commercial down at the corner at the intersection of Hanley with the Lake Forest Project and where the Maverick Gas Station is, that's all commercial down there as well. So there is a lot of commercial in that Ramsey corridor. It's a high-traffic road, it's a five-lane road, so there is a lot of traffic there, especially at that intersection, so it does seem appropriate to us anyways to leave that C17 or to designate that C17. The R8 seems appropriate, you've got R5 here with the Legacy subdivision, you've got R8 here, R8 with Coeur d'Alene Place, Province 20 is this little subdivision here, that's R8. You've got some R17 in here in the Heartland, so the R8 zoning designation that we're asking for feels appropriate. With that, like I said, Tammy's covered a bunch of the information, the staff report's very thorough. I don't have much more to add, but I'll be happy to answer questions that you guys have.
Okay, thank you, Drew. John, go ahead.
Mr. Ditman, you know, I think this is a logical extension of the city. I think, you know, the ACI begs this to come into the city, and the roads, as you see in Legacy, are stubbed north, I would say in anticipation of this progression. Infrastructure's adequate and available to serve it. I think the question that comes up here is why R8 maybe instead of R5? And so could you talk a little bit about, you know, or R17? So if I live at one of those houses, that's my house, it really isn't, but if it was in Legacy Place where those stub streets end, and I'm going to have an R8 neighbor versus an R5 neighbor, paint me a picture, could you, of what, does that mean a little teeny, a little bit smaller lot size, you know, help me get a feel for that?
Sure. Commissioner Ingalls, as you know, you can do a range of lot sizes in R8, not just eight units to the acre. Part of the reason we've chosen it, you got to remember too, is yes, we're bordering R5 here, but we're also bordering commercial here and commercial here, and you've got this R17 strip here, so we're kind of caught in between a few different zones. And so I do understand that the streets in Legacy were stubbed out to continue north. I would go out on a limb and venture to say that you're going to see lots similar in size to Legacy, similar in size to what was done a little further south in the Lake Forest Project. Could they fit into the R5 zone perhaps? I don't know that, I don't have a crystal ball that's any better than yours, but being as we are bordering Prairie, which is again a high-volume traffic road, we're bordering commercial here, the R8 seemed a little bit, to balance, a little bit better to us than an R5 did.
The R8 is a fairly generous lot size. Like you say, Coeur d'Alene Place, some of Lake Forest. It's, R17 would be a, you know, I might be troubled if I lived in there at those stub streets, and all of a sudden you transition right to R17, but R5 to R8, the average person wouldn't know the difference?
I would agree, I would agree.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one question, Drew. On the C17, that long strip, why didn't you incorporate some of that C17 into the R8 with housing on Ramsey Road? Is there, what's the thought process behind that?
Right, right in here you're talking?
Yeah, making the C17 more towards Prairie, and I understand that little pocket in the middle is going to be whatever that's going to be, and...
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, I think the obvious issue is you're going to end up with commercial on the corner.
Right.
Two major arterials come together, it's a great spot for commercial. We decided to bring the commercial down again, you've got C17 here, you've got some C17 down by the Maverick Gas Station, and again, on the other side of Hanley. I don't know what's going to develop here. Perhaps this R8 residential would come through to Ramsey, I don't know that answer. It just seemed, given the traffic volumes on Ramsey and given some of the surrounding uses, C17 seemed to be the ideal use. You've got a, lost my mouse, you've got a church here that's a commercial use, that's still in the county. I don't see that going anywhere anytime soon, but again, that's a commercial use, it's a church, there's a lot of traffic generated from that as well, so it seemed to fit. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
That'll do it for now. Okay, would anyone else like to testify on this hearing? Alright. I guess you don't need any rebuttal time, okay? So is anyone considering a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, to at least start the discussion process, I would make a motion that this commission provide a recommendation to the City Council that this 34-acre parcel be annexed into the city at the R8 and C17 zoning as described, and I would be prepared to make the findings. And I would be prepared to make the findings.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval by Ingles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by Ward. Any discussion? All right. He probably should do his findings before we vote on it, shouldn't he? Yeah. Looks like you have to do your findings.
I would be delighted to. So, uh, I would make findings that this matter, uh, came before us tonight on the 10th of November of 2015. A415 requesting zoning prior to annexation from County Agricultural Suburban and Commercial to City. R8 at eight units per acre and C-17 commercial at 17 units per acre. Applicant being Kerr Family Properties for the 34-acre parcel that was described here. I would, uh, motion that we accept the findings B1 through B7 that are in our packet. And that we adopt B8 in stating that the proposal is in conformance with the comp plan. Specifically, it syncs in nicely with objectives 1.12, uh, you know, in eliminating sprawl and being within the ACI boundary, uh, anticipating this growth. 1.14, the efficiency created by utilizing either existing or easy-to-extend, uh, infrastructure. 2.01, uh, in supporting business, uh, at the same time, uh, being compatible with land uses. 2.02, uh, workforce development growth. 3.05, uh, being compatible with the surrounding, uh, variety of, uh, land uses. This seems like a good compromise solution. And, uh, 3.16, 4.01 and 4.02, uh, having to do with city services, uh, being able to support, uh, this. The, uh, finding B9, the public services, uh, utilities are available and adequate per the staff report, uh, provided. We heard that testimony. B10, uh, the characteristics of the site, uh, makes it suitable for the request in that the topography and the, uh, uh, lay of the land is suitable. Finding B11, uh, that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic and, uh, neighborhood character. So with that, uh, the conclusion would be that the planning commission pursuant to the aforementioned would find that the request for Kerr Properties LLC for zoning prior to annexation as described, should be approved, uh, again at R8, approved recommending R8 and R17 as described in the, uh, in the application.
Okay, so we have the motion by Ingles and the second by Ward. Uh, is there any, any other discussion yet? Okay.
John, in your motion too, you did say R17, you meant C-17.
I meant C-17, thanks Commissioner Ward, appreciate that.
I missed that too, thank you Commissioner Ward.
Catch.
Yep. Okay, uh, roll call Shannon.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Lutrip?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Legislative A4-15. Okay, the next hearing. The applicant is, Joseph Hamilton, Pilgrims Market. Location is 1315 North Fifth Street. This is a proposed, thank you. This is a proposed, uh, community assembly organization special use permit in the R17 zoning district to allow for a market garden. And this is quasi-judicial. This is SP-5-15. Do any commissioners have any conflicts to declare on this one?
Yeah, I'd like to declare, I do, and I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Commissioner Ward is declaring the conflict and since this is the last hearing of the evening, you're probably free to go.
What about the, uh, presentation session, is that to follow or is that kind of a conflict with?
Well, that's true. I guess that, that doesn't tie specifically in this, does it? It's general nature, yeah. Okay, so you can just go in the other room then if you wanna be part of that, yeah, thanks. Okay, Sean, you're doing the staff report.
All right, thank you everybody, good evening. So tonight before you, we have a special use permit, SP515, for a market garden on 1315 North Fifth Street. Our applicant is Joseph D. Hamilton and we'll move on. So the decision point before you tonight is he is requesting a community organization and/or a community assembly and cultural non-assembly special use permit in an R17 zone. This request would allow a market garden on the site. So, um, it, it'll, it behooves me and you for a moment to discuss exactly why this request is before you in the manner that it is. If you look back to when our code was created, approximately 1984-ish, market gardens weren't really a thing back then. We can look way, way back in history and discuss, um, victory gardens and things of that nature, which was very similar to what this request is. But as we moved on in time, we, we had big, large plots of land that were agricultural and largely relegated to the, to the county areas where, where those happened. Since then, things have moved on. It's become a trend for market gardens in city limits now to take smaller plots of land. There's a definition by Wikipedia of what a market garden is. There's more in your staff report, I just made it short for everybody tonight. But largely, it's a small plots of land that are used to do, um, very high-intensity labor style agricultural in the city limits. And because there isn't the room or, um, don't wanna create the, the, the disturbances with large, you know, uh, farm equipment that you would see out on Prairie. So, um, this is our perspective. I did meet with the applicant on the site, had a pretty good, long discussion with him. And so the idea is to have a temporary movable hoop house on the site that would be moved around, um, from time to time. That would help to ensure the proper temperature for the plants that are growing. So in the wintertime, uh, it would be moved into, uh, over the plants that were growing that needed to stay warm for, um, you know, to not freeze, basically. And during the summertime, that they would be placed over plants that could potentially overheat or wither in, in the heat. And how they do that is a geothermal system. What they do is they basically bury pipe under the ground at about a five-foot level and it creates a constant temperature year-round, about 47 degrees. They will use fans to blow the air through those, the pipe to get the proper temperature and pipe that into the hoop house. All right, so, um, because we don't have a code that specifically calls this out, it's fairly new phenomenon nationwide. It's catching on quite largely everywhere across the United States and our code hasn't caught up. We took great care at creating our staff report to ensure that, that we would have regulations in place via either our performance regulation standards, which are already part of code, or the conditions that we placed at the end. So even though it looks like there's a lot of conditions, really a lot of them are common sense and we just wanted to be sure that those bases were covered. Okay, so performance standards, um, they basically limit the, uh, use of the property to prevent, um, large vibration and noise, odor, humidity, heat, cold glare, dust and smoke as to not irritate the neighbors. Inside of your staff report, you can, I have listed those out verbatim as they're called out in the code. Okay, so moving on to parking. This is an interesting one as well because there is no permanent structure that's associated with this use. So our parking code generally requires that parking is, is based on the floor area of a permanent structure. But we don't have one of those here. So you'll see, uh, later on in the staff report at the end, I have requested that they consolidate the lots, which means that it's tied to the existing lot so that it wouldn't be sold off separately. And the parking that exists there at Pilgrims would also be shared with any potential use in the future of the market garden via, um, classes that they would have to show the public how to do this elsewhere. So you can see here where there's 73 stalls are required right now. And there is a total of 89, which is leaving approximately X, 16 extra stalls for the site, for a 24,000-square-foot, um, natural market. So now that we've gotten through that part of it, let's take a look at the aerial photo. See right here is the subject property. It is currently vacant, we'll touch on that a little bit in the future. This is the existing, existing Pilgrims Market area that we had just discussed. There's parking along Fourth Street. There's also a pretty good amount of parking at the rear. It's not highly used, it's currently used mostly by employees due to the front of the store and the entrances being located along Fourth Street. So here's some photos of the subject property. This is looking into the property from Fifth Street. It's also important to notice that this existing house right now is owned by the applicant. So that should help any, allay any concerns, or at least half the concerns that a neighbor would be upset that's directly adjacent. It's also important to notice that, that there is a buffer along this edge. A five-foot fence would be required for this type of use. It's already existing on one side, which is not owned by the applicant. But actually, as I understand it, um, from, from the applicant, owned by, uh, the gentleman who owns Rungy's Furniture across the street. This buffer yard will be extended here as well, uh, because the properties are not tied together. So there will be an extension of a five-foot fence on this side. And then along the front, it's really up to the applicant. My understanding is he would like to provide the four-foot fence that's allowed to allay any traffic or any animals from getting in and out of there. So this is sidewalk frontage along the, looking north along Fifth Street. So you can see the pedestrian access there and how it interfaces with the subject property. And in reverse, 180 degrees, looking south, here is the subject property, right here. And this is clear back from as far back as I could get into the site, right with my back against the wall at Pilgrims, looking out towards, across Fifth Street and into the neighborhood across the street. All right, so, um, much like any special use permit, we'll move through the findings that are required to approve something like this. Finding B8A is, the proposal is or isn't in, is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This got a little bit squirrely for me just because I'm looking at the maps all the time. So I see a black line and I see a definite line and I'm like, okay, well, is it in or out? Well, this one falls right on the black line. So it's, it's in and out and that's why I've provided you guys both of the land use areas that the subject property falls in. One is Appleway North Fourth and the other is Northeast Prairie. And you can see here is the subject property. This is the Pilgrim's site. And then this little piece right here would be the market garden. Also, um, not only is it falling into two districts, but it's also spliced as well between stable, established and transition. So I have provided both stable, established and transition as well. So, um, this is the, the descriptor for the, the Appleway North Fourth District. It's viewed largely as a residential, medical, commercial, warehouse, mixed-use area. There's quite a bit going on in this area. And the Appleway North Street, North Fourth Street tomorrow, is showing, and I've underlined the areas that, that matter the most to the request, is it's generally, it's expected to be a mixed-use area. And commercial buildings will remain lower in scale than in the downtown core. Streetscape should be dominated by pedestrian facilities, landscaping and buildings. And shared-use parking behind buildings is preferred. All right, moving on, so this is the other side. And this is at a different scale, obviously. This encompasses quite a bit more property than the other. So the subject property looks much smaller on this map. You can see that it's spliced again between stable, established and transition, as well as the Northeast Prairie District, right at the black line. And then the definition of what transition is in this case. So Northeast Prairie today, it's large, it's made up of a variety of, of zoning districts with, uh, projected density of three to eight units per acre when it is built out. It provides a large range of housing choices that include large recreation and small pocket parks. So, uh, Northeast Prairie tomorrow, here is the definition of what that is. I've underlined once again the ones that I felt that were most pertinent to the request. Commercial uses are concentrated in existing commercial areas along arterials with neighborhood service nodes where appropriate. Then, the significant comprehensive plans from the staff report here. Each one of these is listed in your staff report verbatim. I just have provided the, uh, the descriptor here. And then next is finding B8B. Is that the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties? So largely in the area, we find that there's residential, civic and commercial. We have touched on the buffer yards already and that mitigates the proximity of the civic use against a residential use. Here is the site plan that was provided to us by the applicant. So a little bit difficult to see, but I can explain it. North arrow here, so this is Fifth Street. We have a sidewalk that we have the pictures of, looking both north and south, looking into the property towards, and then he's showing this hoop house at the rear, obviously it'll, it'll get moved around a little bit. And then we'll see these rows of plantings, um, that he is expecting to have different types of crops in the area. All right, so we'll get into the zoning side of things. Currently, the property is owned R17, as mentioned. You can see there's C-17 directly in front, which is the Pilgrims. It's in, um, couldn't quite figure out exactly how it had happened. It happened quite a bit of time before I got here, but the existing Pilgrims does extend into this R17 area. And I'm not sure why, but the parking is there and it's interesting. Anyways, to the south is a full block of commercial and that is the Goodwill Store. There's also continuing commercial along Fourth Street, as well as all the way across the street. We have entire blocks between Third and Fourth that are commercial. You can see that, um, there is a couple of areas here that are zoned R12 and C-17L that are on the same side of the street as Fifth. And then Fifth seems to be the, the large divider between the transition, between commercial and full-blown. Everything is R12 residential on the other side of Fifth Street. All right, land use is, is very similar to what I have just explained. There's lots of commercial happening along Third and Fourth Streets. This is all commercial, this is commercial as well. The subject property, as I understand it, had a single-family home on it that had burned some time ago. And there is single-family residential on either side. There is some duplex across the street, there is some single-family residential as well, some civic use mixed in. All right, so finding B8C, which is the last finding, is the location, design and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities and services. Inside of your staff report, you'll, that's found on page 13, you'll find all of the comments that were made by staff. Largely, they're all in support of it. There are some conditions that go along with that. The one that, that stood out to me was the fire department wanted to ensure that the hoop house material was made of something that wouldn't create an issue if it was to burn. So the applicant will be required to meet anything that the fire department needs as far as the type of material. Okay, so 14 proposed conditions. Would you like me to read through them or? Okay, I see I'm shaking this.
I think you have.
Um, a number of them are planning-based and that's largely due to the fact that we don't have this use directly defined in our code. So we wanted to be sure that we touched on everything we could possibly think of. We had looked at, um, Spokane has an ordinance, Moscow has an ordinance as well. I use Moscow for the most part as far as like, no animals, no bees, that sort of thing, that we were actually growing thing, growing things. that we were actually growing things there that were green and needed water. Click. Okay, I guess not. I guess that's the end of my report. Actually, I had the rest of the fourteen that were there. They are listed in your staff report. I just had a computer error. So all of the notices were mailed properly, and you need to make your decision to, finding and findings need to be made to approve or deny, or deny without prejudice, or approve with, deny without prejudice. Thank you.
What are those choices, huh?
Just three.
Okay. Commissioner Ingles.
Yes, sir. A good report, Sean. That was a tough one, by the way. So a question for you, you know, I like the concept of urban gardens and that's great. You know, we have the community garden in town and whatnot. And I think that's a wonderful thing. However, I'm struggling with the fit. Great concept, but is that the right spot? And so I try to understand, if I was living across the street from this, and finding B eight B that you walked us through, one of the things, in fact, it's scripted right in our worksheet, that we would look at is compatibility with height, layout, architectural style. And I'm not sure, I think alls we have is a plan view, a simple plan view sketch. And I don't know, it's hard for me to make a judgment on what a hoop house looks like architecturally to see whether or not the design and appearance of the project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Is there any other sketches or drawings or anything like that that you're aware of?
The applicant, I believe, has brought a presentation that will show some of that. But what I've provided is what was included with the application.
Thank you.
Sean, this is zone R seventeen?
Correct.
If a house was on there, what are the setbacks on either the front or back or whatever the street might be?
Because there's no alley, there would be five, it would be twenty-five from the rear, five from one side, ten from the other, and twenty from the front.
So you got a twenty and twenty-five depending on what's front or rear?
Correct. There is no alley, so it's five and ten on the sides versus.
Yeah, five and ten on the sides. I'm just talking.
Twenty on the front and twenty-five.
Twenty and twenty-five.
Right, you can put garages into the rear twenty-five, however.
You can.
Yes, your principal dwelling unit is what is the setbacks that I gave you.
Right, so if Fifth Street was the front, it would have to be twenty feet back per se.
From the front, correct.
Yeah, so you'd be twenty in the front, and then on the other side of there, it would be twenty-five if it was just a structure. But within that twenty-five, you could put a garage.
Yes. It's also important to note, to note too, that you can have a porch encroach in ten feet into that twenty feet, but it has to remain open to the air. It can be covered, but it can't be interior, like space that's heated.
Right, and the reason I'm asking that because here on the sketch, it's asking for, I guess, you have your city sidewalk, which is five feet, and then they're asking to put from the city sidewalk, five foot in, starting of whatever that line represents. I don't have any idea. Maybe that's a question for the applicant.
That's a great question for that.
Okay, all right. And then the same thing in the back. And I go with my other commissioner about, I have no idea what that structure would look like and where it might sit. So that's something we can address with the applicant. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So right now, you can put a home there in some fashion with these setbacks and whatnot, and you have certain height restrictions. Are there height restrictions on this hoop house?
Currently, we consider a hoop house a temporary structure, and so planning does not regulate temporary structures at this point.
So if I have a non-regulated structure, I could go really, really high?
Potentially. And we do have maximum heights for, you know, eighteen feet in the rear yard, which is the rear twenty-five feet that I was telling Tom about, and then thirty-two foot where the home could go.
So because this hoop house is a temporary structure, then whatever requirements are for a house on this property will not apply to the hoop house?
Correct.
Okay, what is a market garden and what is a community garden?
All right, so it depends on where you're at in the country. It depends on your code.
No, in the city of Coeur d'Alene.
The city of Coeur d'Alene does not define a market garden.
But you have it defined up here. So are we defining a market garden now?
We'd have to change the code for that.
What, do you have civic use? Could you help me in civic use? Why is this a civic use?
Okay, so if you take a look, if you take a look at page two of your staff report, we have classification of unlisted uses. And so if an activity or a facility which is not expressly classified within any activity group shall be included in that, in that group whose description most closely portrays it. So what they have done is come forward to us and said, hey, this, your code doesn't really apply in this situation. What would you suggest that it fits into? And the community planning director has determined that the proposed market garden would require a special use permit, number one, and which would fit under both the community assembly and the community organization of uses. So I've provided, I believe, right, on page three. Civic activities include the performance of utility, educational, recreational, cultural, medical, protective, governmental, and other activities which are strongly vested with public or social importance and are described as follows. And so I provided you B and C, which the planning director had determined that this would fall into. B is community organizations. That's personally where I felt that it fit best into our code, which are activities typically performed by nonprofit organizations, whether social, charitable, civic, or professional. This includes organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, or cross labor unions, et cetera. Now, this isn't necessarily a nonprofit, but the idea behind it is to provide classes to the community to show them how to grow during all times of the year. And that's as close as we could get with our code.
So do community gardens require same-type things?
We do have a community garden right now. And my, I wasn't involved with the approval of that. However, I know that they've had a little bit of mission creep. It's something that we are going to work on as far as defining in our code and bringing them into compliance, whatever we find, but.
So we don't have a community garden, a market garden defined? We do have something called a community garden that is operating in a residential area. I don't, we have more than one. So why are we going from community garden to market garden? What's the need for that? Why don't, can't we just follow what we've done with the community gardens?
I would say, and this is my conjecture at this point, is that it has a commercial element to it, being associated with and attached to a commercial use, number one. Number two, I don't know how the other ones were ever really approved or not approved. I have no personal knowledge of that. I know that there is at least one that's operating in city limits. And that's as far as I can go.
So it's commercial because it is, it abuts or attaches to a commercial operation?
No, it's a civic request. The land use is, according to what I have received from the planning directors, it would be a civic use, although it has a commercial nature to it because what is grown on the site will be sold on the commercial site, not from the actual R seventeen site. And that's one of the conditions that were placed on the property if approved.
Items not be sold directly from that parcel.
Correct.
Commissioner Luttrell, if I may clarify as well, a lot of communities have amended their codes to allow market gardens, community gardens, and then accessory gardens. And the market garden is different, like Sean said, because it is more commercial in nature. Some of them sell produce from the site, others sell off-site. Whereas a community garden is more for people just having their own plot of land for their own personal consumption or to donate to a food bank or similar. So there, they are different nuances between the two.
So those differences are significant then, apparently.
The difference is what?
Community garden and the gardens that are not community. Now you put in there that you're not gonna, bees are not allowed. Do we have any ordinances in the city where you don't allow bees? And can I have a bee in my backyard, bee hive? Or just maybe one bee?
Yes, you actually can. You can also have two chickens. You can have some other things.
But for this, for our market garden, so why, I don't know what, it's not a fine term, but anyway, so the market garden can't have bees?
We didn't say that. That's just our, that's our conditions that we have requested. There's no market garden code at all, so we're going from scratch. The reason why staff felt that way is no one is living on site. So, you know, if you're gonna take care of chickens and bees and things of that nature, we would expect that it goes with a residential unit where someone is there to catch them if they get away or in the middle of the night or something like that.
There may be difference between bees and chickens though.
What's that?
See, there may be difference between bees and chickens as far as getting.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there is. And bees and birds too.
Oh, no, no, you, well, I just, I don't, I don't comprehend the need to prohibit bees. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion or, I mean, questions? All right.
Hold on, I just got one question here. On page eight, under buffer yard regulations, is, the applicant is proposing to put a five-foot fence. So I take it he's putting, there's some fencing there, but just extend the fencing to enclose the hoop, whatever that's called, that hoop building as well? Or is it just the garden that the fencing has to be?
It would be where the property lines are along the sides.
Beginning to end.
The residential uses to the north and south.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? All right. Okay, this is the time for the applicant to come up. If you could state your name and address, sir.
Thank you, Sean, for the thorough work you've done to prepare the presentation. Good evening to all of you on the planning committee and all to the, to all the residents who have shown up as well to take an interest in this topic. I read Sean's staff report prior this evening, and it is not my intent to be redundant.
Sir?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Signing myself in, okay.
I need you to state your name and address, and I need to swear you in real briefly here.
Joe Hamilton, thirteen sixteen, North Fourth Street, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho.
Okay, and Joe, do you swear the testimony you're giving tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, and then when you get done too, I think they'll probably need to have you sign one of these sign-in sheets there, but you can go ahead with your presentation right now.
All right.
So, sorry to interrupt you there.
That's okay.
Just had protocol, we had to do. Thank you.
Got excited. I read Sean's staff report prior this evening, and it's not my intent to be redundant and restate many of the items Sean already so thoroughly addressed. I'm instead going to expand on a few items that I did not anticipate him addressing at length. Firstly, I want to elaborate on why I think our request conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Secondly, I would like to take a little time to review my track record as the owner of Pilgrim's Market, to substantiate my claims of providing services akin to those provided by community organizations. Lastly, I'll show you some pictures of other urban market gardens, so you get a sense of what we expect ours to look like. Are you, and I just hit enter?
You can, or your mouse is right there.
Okay, okay. I believe that our special use permit request conforms to the general nature of the first three goals of the comprehensive plan, the natural environment, economic environment, and the home environment. The natural environment, this general goal supports policies that preserve the beauty of our natural environment, enhances the beauty of the Coeur d'Alene. Gardens are just beautiful and somehow comforting and create a strong sense of place. Objective one point oh six addresses preservation of urban forests. I assume that this is intended to preserve beauty, but perhaps it's also intended for greenhouse gas remediation, in which case gardens are intense hotspots for CO2 sequestration also. Economic environment, this general goal aims to promote opportunities for economic growth. This proposed market garden is an economic engine. Pilgrim's Market already employs nearly ninety people, providing over one point seven five million dollars a year in wages, and this market garden will create even more jobs. My goal is to grow local food for our customers at Pilgrim's, but it's also to pave the way for others and to educate them to do the same. Market gardening is a great way for people to make great use of their yards to grow food for themselves, but also potentially to sell to restaurants, to friends, and at the farmer's market. The local health district classifies these activities as farm stand operations and allows people to grow and sell with no permits, providing that they do not process the food in any way. Municipalities all over the country are amending planning codes to promote these types of neighborhood beautifying and economic stimulating activities, but I hope to share more about that later. Okay.
It's time for a new laptop.
Home environment, this goal seeks to preserve the qualities that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to live. Who doesn't like to look at a lovely garden? There's a groundswell of home gardening in our community, and this market gardening is just a logical extension of those well-recognized and community-supported activities. Objectives three point oh eight and three point oh nine aim to emphasize pedestrian orientation and to create beauty, safety, and value when planning neighborhood preservation and revitalization. I think that all pedestrians enjoy looking at a beautiful garden, as gardens are somehow comforting and create a strong sense of place. Now I would like to talk a little bit about, take a little time to review my track record as the owner of Pilgrim's Market, to substantiate my claims of providing services akin to those of a community organization, so that you will grant me this request based on these I should first mention that our mission statement is unlike many other for-profit businesses, and that it demands that we do not let our desires for profit outweigh our commitment to acting as not only a store, but also a community resource, for which we provide valuable education, assembly, and networking opportunities. We have a long track record of spending time, money, and resources in such activities that don't pencil out, so to speak. In two thousand and ten, we built a room in our store that we call the Pilgrim's Market Health Education Center. Since that time, we've hosted nearly four hundred events that have drawn around seven thousand participants. We have made the space available for everything from the local Cootney County Farmer's Market annual meetings, to beekeeping classes, to cooking classes, and of course, classes regarding personal health. This slide shows a couple professors from Washington State University Organic and Sustainable Ag Program. They gave a presentation about their department, and of course, many would question the business savvy of promoting something like, something like that. But our commitment to education compels us to engage in valuable things like this. We've also recorded some of these events and have a YouTube channel. This slide demonstrates a wild edibles class that we promoted, in which people were shown how to walk around the hills and find nutritious and medicinal foods to forage. We've posted thirty-six videos, have four thousand four hundred and twenty-nine subscribers to our channel, and have had four hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine views of these videos that we've posted. This one video alone on making green smoothies with leafy greens grown in your garden has been viewed two hundred and eighty-six, four hundred and sixty-nine times. Thousand, thank you. That is far more people than shop in our store and even live in this city. So again, this activity is more akin to a community. So again, this activity is more akin to a community organization than to a for-profit business. Pilgrim's Market also has a DVD library of documentaries and videos on various aspects of healthful living. We charge a very nominal rate for the rental despite the thousands of dollars we've invested, and again, this is far more of a community service than a profitable venture. And finally, in two thousand and fourteen, Pilgrim's Market received an outstanding recognition for these exact community-building activities from an organization called New Hope Media, which organizes the largest natural foods industry trade shows and publishes several industry magazines. They selected Pilgrim's Market and only two other stores in the entire country, apart from nearly sixteen thousand others, and honored us with the coveted retailer of the year award. I would also like to point out that the three, that three local nonprofit organizations, the Inland Northwest Food Network, the Cootney Environmental Alliance, and Link Foods have all provided a statement of support for this special use permit. And they all, and they will all three cooperate in promoting and providing educational events in this garden. Here are some pictures of some other market gardens to give you a sense of what ours could look like. Oh, I got, I, one slide too far. I hope that I've demonstrated that our request conforms to the comprehensive plan and that we will indeed deliver on our promise to use the market garden to educate and inspire others in our community in a manner similar to a community organization. Do I stay here for questions? Ignore that, uh, slide there, that's for another presentation. I'm done with my present, my, okay.
All right, okay, all right, uh, hold on, let's see if we have some questions for you.
Your hooped buildings, your hooped structures, would it be constraining if they were limited to essentially the same dimensions, same criteria that a house would be, uh, limited to on that piece of property?
No, that'd be fine.
And bees, are bees important to this garden? I mean, everything I read about is how, uh, bees are a very integral part, you know, I'll let you talk. I mean, does this restriction of bees cause a concern with you?
Well, I don't think there's a restriction of, of wild bees. I think, um, Sean was saying that, uh, we wouldn't have bee hive activity.
So that'd be fine with you with no bee hive?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Very good, thank you. That's all questions I have.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question. Joe, the, the hoop building, I've seen a couple of them. There's some that had a pitch to it, some that are round. What's your intention to help me and perhaps my other commissioners, a little visualization in being that that's gonna be at, let's say, the rear of the property and the gardens in the front, which the gardens are very pretty? Uh, a little concerned, and maybe with your answer, I won't be concerned. How are you gonna, how are you gonna shade that particular building from that side of the other neighbor looking at it? If you follow my question.
How am I gonna shade?
Well, how are you gonna enclose it? Is there gonna be a fence at the other side of it? Is it gonna be, if you had a, a building there and you had a backyard, perhaps you would have a fence? So the, the other person that lives in the house across the way, I guess, would they be looking at that building? Is there a building across that way?
Yes, they would, they would be able to see the structure.
Okay, that's my question. How are you gonna camouflage that building so it isn't just, whatever the description of this building is? It's plastic, is it, uh, what is that building? Because someone's gonna be looking at that, and that's, I'd like a little clarification on that for myself.
Well, to be honest, we haven't clarified the building materials yet. Um, we, we figured we had to get past this step first. Um, I could have anticipated that. In general, it's a polyurethane, uh, clear plastic that you've probably seen, in fact, um, I have a, oh yeah. They have, uh, they have a very similar one, uh, near North Idaho College, the Roots Community Garden, I think it's referred to.
Okay.
Right, it's right near that, uh, roundabout.
Okay.
And so it, it, it would likely be similar to that, although we are considering using some new space-age technology which is, uh, uh, would look more like, um, more like glass. Uh, it allows in a lot more light and that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
But to be fair, we have not settled on the exact, uh, structure.
Okay, all right.
And materials yet.
And I'm sure, you know, height-wise, it's not gonna be that. How high would any building that you put there, that, that structure be approximately?
I mean, I think it's common for these to probably be ten to twelve feet.
Okay, so it's not a tall structure whatsoever. Okay, all right.
Does it move throughout the yard? Can it move from one position to another? So it's not stationary, it moves as the crops are required, correct?
With the seasons?
Yes. So it's not a stationary element, it moves as the crops are coming, or coming up out of the ground. And then are you fully fencing this, this lot entirely? Security gate, uh, like a gate to get in, like secured? I'm just concerned in an urban environment, um, this is your product, and so at night, will there be any lighting? Will there be a discouragement from vandalism or thievery? That's your concern more than mine, but I gather a fenced yard is probably what's happening all the way around.
That's right, yeah. I mean, I hadn't given much thought to security, uh, at this point, but.
We had goats, they didn't do well. Um, the other question is, um, the, uh, mulching, you'll have debris. Will that stay and stay in the yard itself and have mulch, a mulch destination? So it's not, what I'm seeing is there's not a lot of transit in and out of this site other than seeds and growing things, and then it moves across the street through hand-carried methods? It's not in a car or a truck, is it?
Yeah, so the store, Pilgrim's Market, uh, directly adjoins the property, so we would literally walk off the property right into the store. So there, we would never create any traffic or in the city streets at all.
And mulch stays on-site?
And then would stay on-site, we, we do hope to install a, a composting facility um, for, um, for, um, trimmings, uh, from the store, like the produce department, the deli, that, you know, you've always got, yeah, so then we hope to, um, we hope to reuse that material on-site and then become composted material in the market garden.
So this actual market garden, other than the people who are working on it and the people who are coming to visit it, it's not generating trips? The produce itself does not generate trip traffic?
That's right.
Which is what we want. We don't want, we wanna stay carbon neutral. So this takes the trucks and takes the, you know, gasoline out of the picture, which is huge. Okay.
Okay. Couple of questions if I could, Mr. Hamilton. So in the staff report, I don't, I presume staff gives you a chance to review their, Sean mentioned there's fourteen conditions, he had them up there. Have you had a chance to carefully read through all of those?
Uh, no, I have not.
Have not?
I mean, I, I did read a staff report, I didn't study at length the fourteen conditions.
My question was going to be, you know, have you, have you read them? Uh, are you familiar with them? And are you okay with them? Uh, number one. And, uh, you know, the bees I see are already on, on there, that doesn't need to be a new condition, but perhaps as Commissioner Messina mentioned, we might craft even a fifteenth condition that might say something to the effect that the height and setbacks of this temporary hoop structure would conform to the standards as if it were a, a permanent building in the, uh, R seventeen district. And if we crafted something like that, would you be okay with that? Is that what I?
Well, it's, it, because I'm looking at a sketch the applicant gives me, gave us, and that structure seems to be, even though it says requesting removable temporary hoop house structure and a kind of blank area in the back. So I was assuming that that structure was gonna be back there. Now I'm understanding it's movable, and I was gonna ask the applicant, so does it go from the back and then it goes over one of these other little squares, number one? Because I'm looking at dimension-wise, you know, one is sixty feet long and twenty-four foot wide. So are you gonna just have one of those back there? So I'm trying to get a little understanding how that building moves around, what's it made of? How does it get moved? Or is your intention in the back to put a structure that could fit into a twenty-foot by however wide the lot is? Were you gonna have one big one like that or? And I understood you haven't given it much attention, but you have to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
You're asking us to say, okay, to something that we don't really know what it might look like.
I do understand that, yeah. Well, let me answer Commissioner Ingalls' question first, which is, um, yeah, I just refreshed my memory and yes, I'm fine with all of those fourteen and the fifteenth, uh, condition. There was a little misunderstanding, uh, that Sean had in regards to my site plan. I had really hoped for the, the hoop house to be more in the, the, the front of the lot and not just in the back. I happened to write the note about the hoop house over that section, but I, my intention was to kind of point that, you know, it was just the note, but it was really gonna be in the main part of the lot. He told me, you know, about all the setbacks, the twenty in the front, or the, you know, twenty and five and ten on the sides and, and, but then he was saying, when we met on-site, he was saying, well, but I think those setbacks are for permanent structures. So the last we met, there was still a little confusion on what setbacks may be on temporary structures, I think. Um, and it, it sounds like maybe there, there's still a little gray area there that remains. That being said, I, I, I wanna make clear that I'm not personally hung up on the hoop house. You know, where it goes or this or that. I will do whatever you all tell me you agree to allow me to do. My main, the main thrust of my special use permit request is just to be able to have the market garden.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And if that means that you don't allow me to have a hoop house, well, fine, I'll, I'll still do it, okay? But I understand that there's still a little bit of gray area on this hoop house. I don't personally have the answers of what you'll allow me, and I don't even understand the process of how you would determine that, but, um, I'm, just needless to say, I'm, I'm open with, I suppose, whatever you all decide.
Well, and you also have a geothermal system, so you're gonna move that fan and attach that to the end of the geothermal, and that's gonna have to move with the hoop house in order to keep the air moving inside of that, is it not? Or is that a stationary hut, a subscription for the fan, fan mechanism?
Yeah, so the tubes underground are always there.
You've gotta push that air through.
So we would dig down, put them in place once, and then in, in two spots, let's say we moved the structure, twice a year. And so we would have all that already in the ground and that would remain there. So on the plots that were just in the open air in the summer, yeah, there'd be a couple tubes sticking up, but it would be no big deal, the tubes would be underneath. The whole idea is season extension, and so the idea of the hoop house is being able, you can actually grow, lettuces, spinach, Asian greens very well in the winter. And, uh, the hoop house and some other, um, little, little netting that you can kind of put over the plants in the winter actually, uh, make a, a really dramatic difference in keeping the freezing temperatures out. And, um, they say actually some of these greens grow better in the cold weather. They're crisp, more crisp and flavorful and. So that, that's really the desire for the hoop houses, to be able to grow food in the winter. And, and, and for us to go out and, because I don't think there's really many people doing it right now, uh, but there's a lot of books and information on it, a lot of folks elsewhere doing it. And so, you know, we aim to kind of be a pioneer in this area and try to try out some technologies and see what works, frankly, that could then be used for other people, just in their own gardens.
So, and again, I'm not trying to get hooked up on this hoop house thing at all, because I think it, if you say you need it to do better, uh, producing of vegetables, so be it, that's great. Uh, again, so does it go over, like, you have here section one with a, a couple of lines in there? Would it cover that whole thing or would it just cover certain portions? Or do you actually physically grow something different than you have in these four squares? Does the hoop house go, have to go over these four, one of these four squares at some given time? Or is it, let's say, in the back, but you grow stuff in it? Because now I'm looking at if it's movable, and there might have been a little miscommunication about the twenty feet by however wide the lot is, you might have more garden back in that area if it's moving around. So I'm trying to get a grasp of what this thing is, because I'd like to know.
Yeah.
How big is it gonna be?
I understand. I guess I would, um, again, just kind of say, um.
Okay, so that's a hoop house.
I'm agreeable to whatever you guys tell me to do.
Mine before that was a hoop house, the next one.
That is a hoop house, yeah.
But it's good enough, it's good enough.
Yeah, I would say that one is, um.
Here's another one up top.
Uh, it's probably thirty feet wide, let's see, those are probably four foot.
So if I, let me follow on your question, what time, but currently you can build a house there, and there's a certain footprint that that house has.
Yes.
My question I, I asked, and I thought I heard the answer was yes, it's okay. Can your hoop house fit that same dimension? It may not take the whole thing initially, but it's, it's in the front room one part of the year, it's in the back of your room the second part of the year, but it's all within the footprints of the house. If that's the case, then, you know, it, I don't think it's much of an issue for it. It's just, it's just a, a, a structure smaller than what is permitted, but it gets to move, but it's gonna stay within that footprint. And, and as much as we haven't defined what a market garden is and everything, we, we go under current zoning and everything, it seems like we could ease, may be able to address the applicant's needs, but still stay within our current zoning and whatnot.
Okay, I follow you.
That's what I hear you saying, and I sort of, I certainly agree with you on that.
Okay. All right, fine, I'm good with everything, all right?
So did that, did you follow that thing? And that's, that would be the fifth, the fifteenth condition? You happy with that?
I am happy with it.
All right.
All right, so we're okay for now.
For now.
I think that's, I think that's it for now.
Okay.
You'll have some more time, uh, later on here if you need it. Okay, I just have three people signed up here. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I can pronounce this last name right. It's Tessa at four nineteen Wallace, J I L O T, uh, in favor, do not wish to testify. Okay, and Jeremy Jenkins, in favor, you do not wish to testify, okay. Carolyn Gunlach at, uh, three sixteen Military, in favor, do not wish to testify. And if you change your mind, want to testify, just let me know. Okay, then I don't have anyone else. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, come up and testify regarding this? Okay.
Nice one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see in. No, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see it in the shadow there, I apologize. Come on up, if you'd like to testify, sure, come on up. They'll, they'll let you sign one of, one of these sheets up there.
I think she said it wasn't relevant to the topic.
Oh, it's not relevant to the topic.
For us all? Well, okay. Well, maybe, maybe that should be after then.
Yeah, I can do it after.
It's a gift, okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, no one else wanted to testify regarding this? I just wanna be sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay.
Can I testify?
Yeah, you sure can. That's okay, state, okay, just state your name up there.
It's William Young Bennett.
Okay, and, uh, sir, do you testify? Do you, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, yeah, he'll, he'll let you sign something after you testify, so go ahead, you have five minutes.
Um, I, I wanna testify a couple of things. I.
I, I, I agree, I, you know, I'm for this. Um, first of all, I'm actually going to be the person that's going to be doing the farming on this plot. Um, I'm, that's my responsibility. So it would create work for me ultimately, which is, would be great for me and my wife. Volunteer and learning opportunity, um, for the community. I think it would be incredible. I've had an opportunity, we've been here in Coeur d'Alene for seven years now. And, uh, four of those have been part of the farmer's market, the Cootney Farmer's Market. And being in those relationships with those people, um, the, the other farmers in this area as well as the craftsmen, the people that, you know, bring their products to, to the market have created a relationship with them. And, um, and so this gives us or affords us more opportunity to, to do that in this community. And I've been, you know, I've the one that's been, we're looking at something. So as far as my background in history, I'm learning quite a bit in, in regards to the farming aspect. I've done quite a bit of gardening. Uh, we currently reside at, um, a residence that is limited to, uh, a concrete patio in the front. And so I don't have a lot of opportunity to grow things in the soil. And we started looking at four years ago and doing something, uh, where we're doing, um, more along the lines of urban farming, uh, where we had buckets. And, and we were growing things out of that, those, those buckets on this concrete slab, our parking lot, our, our driveway.
Container gardening.
Yeah, container garden, yeah. Um, so I've had a lot of opportunity and, and before that to, to do small scale gardening. We've had to look at this quite a bit more differently because obviously it's more urban farming, um, than just my, my gardening. And it's afforded me the opportunity to, um, and has inspired me, um, through the research and learning, uh, all the incredible possibilities, opportunities that this affords us as, as a, uh, a company, Pilgrim's Market, but also as a community as well in, in the edu, from, from a standpoint of the educational aspects that it could afford us. And that's it. So I approve. I'm for it.
Okay.
I think we figured that out.
I thank you for your testimony, sir. Okay, is there anyone else? All right. And, uh, Joe, did you have anything else you want to add? Did you have anything else that you want, want to add to this? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, it seems to me that this is a very opportune time to come before us. The, uh, item before us earlier was 34 acres of essentially garden farm that was turned into residential. And here we have an opportunity for which to already turn into a garden. And I strongly support this. It also dovetails on those of people that do garden. This is a significant time of the year to mow your leaves to add most of your own garden. And, uh, I, I, with that 15th condition of having a hoop thing within the footprint of the, uh, res, of a house that would, if one was built there. I, I certainly think this is a very wise thing for us to approve.
All right, is anyone working on a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd certainly move to approve, but have no idea of how to amend the findings. Um, they seem rather complex, uh, and lengthy. Um, but, uh, hearing no, uh, no testimony against and all the positive testimony for. And my own point of view is that this is also a tremendous opportunity for the community. And, uh, we should see it done. So I have a motion to approve, um, the request for a community organization, community assembly, special use permit in our 17 zoning district. Motion to approve.
I agree there and, uh, I would be happy to make motions or make findings if nobody else wants to do it. That would be, you sure?
You're good at it.
Yeah, please.
All right, that would be, that would be great.
You need to learn.
So I'm going to muddle through it. When we get to the last, uh, I'll welcome some critiquing from my esteemed members on, on the 15th condition. Okay, so the findings would be such that the matter came before us tonight. Uh, SP 515, uh, for the community organization, community assembly, cultural non-assembly, special use permit in the R17 zone. For, uh, Mr. Joseph D. Hamilton on a 0.161 acre parcel, 7,000 square foot at 1315 North Fifth Street. And that we would adopt the findings B1 through B8 that are in the packet. And, uh, that, uh, we would, uh, uh, find in B8A that the proposal is in conformance with the, uh, comprehensive plan. Particularly, uh, objective 1.14 efficiency, uh, 2.01, the, uh, business image and diversity and, and supportive service industries. Uh, objective 2.04, uh, neighborhood's, uh, service nodes, uh, as well as 3.04 ensuring compatibility with the neighborhood and a finding of, uh, or supportive objective 4.01, uh, you know, that, uh, that meets the needs of the, uh, city services and the desires of the citizenry. Uh, B8B, that the design of this, the site, uh, is, is compatible with the location setting, uh, with the adjacent, uh, properties. Uh, I think with some fine tuning of a 15th condition to ensure that the architectural style, uh, height setbacks and such of this hoop structure, uh, ensure compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, B8C, that the, we would find that the location, design and size of the proposal, uh, is adequately served. Uh, those are, uh, state statements that, uh, Sean pointed out that are in their staff report. City services are available and such, uh, to, to, to do this. Uh, and so in conclusion, the planning commission, uh, pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the requested Joseph Hamilton for special use permit should be approved with 14, and I'm not going to read them, uh, conditions that are, uh, indicated there and Mr. Hamilton acknowledged. I believe he's, uh, nodding his head that he's acknowledged and comfortable with those. Uh, and then we would add a 15th one, something to the effect, and help me here, that, uh, the hoop house or any temporary structures, uh, employed in this special use permit, uh, would be in keeping with the standards of the R17, uh, zoning with respect to setbacks, height, et cetera. So move. Let's, uh, should we get this motion done first and then do the, the discussion on the, on this criteria or can we do this right now?
I think it's better to do it as part of the findings, just so it's all.
And then should he, should he be the maker of the motion since he's doing all the findings?
I think that's better. And then maybe Rumppler would be the second.
So all of that was my motion?
Yeah, that's your motion, then Rumppler might be.
I'd second that motion.
Seconding it, yeah. Here, here's what I would just throw in there. You've got the 20-foot setback from the front for a house. Now, if you have a garage, you know, the house has to be 25 foot from the rear. But if you have a garage, that can be, I think, all the way to the rear, can it, Sean? Okay. And then a garage can't have a height limit of over 18 feet. So I'm thinking since you have the store and the commercial in the back, there's no reason really he couldn't go all the way to the back. But maybe he shouldn't go any further than 20 feet from the front like a house. And maybe you'd have the same height in setbacks as a garage, for example, the 18 feet.
I agree. Could, could we say something along that, that, uh, the, the temporary buildings will be within the footprint of the allowable structures currently per middle of the property?
Well, I think the height is the issue because your single family residences can go up to two stories plus the roof. Too tall and the wind, the wind will blow it away. No, you'll be airborne. No, I, I disagree. I think, uh, a garage height of 18 is acceptable for a hoop structure. And frankly, I've seen a lot of them. They don't go high. They don't go two-story. There's no advantage to it. You're not building, you're not growing palm trees or banana plants. So I think 18 is probably a good, uh, garage height. But when you get into a two-story plus a roof, you're, you can be 24, 26 feet off the ground. I almost blew away one time holding down one of those tents. It's not fun.
So allowable structure, uh, currently permitted on the, uh, on the property, but not to exceed X number of feet.
And I could say 18 is the garage height. That's the top peak of the roof line, correct?
Yeah, I think so. Is that right, Sean?
Well, it.
It'll vary depending on where you want.
If you're going to take height of a building, you're just going to have to see what our.
But what if we took the garage height?
It's the max height and that.
So for an accessory structure, the maximum height is 18 feet with a two and a half, 12 pitch or greater. If it's a flat top roof, then the maximum height is 14 feet.
Yeah, this is, this is an accessory, not structure, but it's a form, so.
It's a form of a structure.
Form of a structure.
I think he said 12 feet. He probably won't go over 12 feet, but 18, I think there's some, there's some reasoning for the 18 is why I picked it.
What, what about setbacks?
Well, I was proposing you have the 20 feet in the front like a house. But I don't see any reason to limit him to 25 foot in the rear like a house. I think a garage can go all the way to the rear, so why not let him go all the way to the rear?
Let me, let me take a stab at, at, let's not crawl through those motions again, or the findings again, but to say, amend the motion, the findings as stated, including the 14 existing conditions with a 15th condition, that the temporary hoop structure be limited to 18 feet in height with a front 20-foot setback and a 5 and 10 side setback. Would that work for everyone up here and does that give the applicant an envelope of workability?
How do I know which side is 5 and which side is 10?
Let me, let me, let me interject something again. I, I think on a normal permanent house, when you don't have an alley, it's a 5 and a 10, like Sean said, or it's a 5 and a 5 with an alley. But I think, I think that was put into the zoning code years ago, so you always had room somewhere to get behind a house. If there wasn't an alley and you had to get, get back and repair a sore line or do something back there. So since we got a temporary structure that, that's really not permanent or anything, I propose we just do a 5 and a 5.
Can I add on to this?
And if you have any input, let me know on that. Go ahead.
Sean, go ahead.
Vice Chairman.
I'm going to hear what Sean has to say.
I was just going to say, uh, very similar to what Brad had said, is it's a 5 and a, and a 10 without an alley. But with a movable structure, as long as you have 10 on one of the sides, then you're meeting that requirement. So really it's, it's 5 and 5 if you're comfortable with that because it's a movable structure. Or the 5 and 10 can swap as long as there's 10 on one side at all times. So really your choice.
Scratch the, uh, amended motion that didn't get a second.
Well, let me, let me, let me, okay, um, I'm going by a plan that I have in front of me. And I'm trying to, I understand what you're doing, but the plan says 5-foot setbacks. And I understand this is just a drawing. So I'm saying he's got rows of gardens in there. So right now, his plan is to do what's here for his garden. He is already having a setback of 5 foot from the property line into these little boxes. So he's got his 5-foot setback, his, his hoop house, which I'm, I'm understanding is going to cover some of these gardens at some point in time. Are going to cover the gardens and the gardens are way inside that 5-foot setback on either left or right. And, and, and as far as back and front, he is asking for, according to this diagram, having his, his little footprint of these gardens, 5 feet from the front sidewalk. That was my question to you. Can that be done if we approve it like this or is that out of the box? Because in the front, you're supposed to have 20-foot setback. So we're saying, okay, you can have 5 feet, which is according to this plan that I have in front of me. So I don't want to approve a plan or something saying he's thinking he could put 5 feet. And then when he goes, he goes and does this, the city goes, I'm sorry, you've got to be 20 foot back. So I want some clarification on what his thought process is and what we have in our books as an ordinance. Because an ordinance for a house here has to be 20 foot back from the sidewalk, except for a deck that can come in 10 feet. So that means he's got to have 10 foot of space. According to what he has in front of me, he's asking for 5. And I want to make sure he understands what we're saying he can do.
Is the 5 feet for a garden or for the hoop house?
It's for garden.
I'm just, I'm saying we're, the garden.
The garden can go right up to the sidewalk, I suspect.
It could be in the green space on the.
I'm asking for clarification. Can he do that? Because then if he decides he wants to put that hoop house over the garden that's 5 foot, only he can't do it. I want to make sure he understands that.
I think he does. And let, let, let me, let me, I, I appreciate the concern and I, I totally agree with, you know, making the clarity. So the expectation is there and we'll, we'll look for a head nod and whatnot as we attempt to try to, uh, find, I think, a reasonable 15th condition. Which, and I'll just keep trying at this and I think, I think we're getting close. But I think if we said the 15th condition would put a limitation on the height of 18 feet with a 20-foot setback on the hoop house, not the gardens, but the hoop house.
Okay.
And the hoop house, not the gardens, would have a 5 and 5, but it could go all the way to the rear. Words to that effect would be the 15th condition. And I think Mr. Hamilton is nodding his head that I could live with that. That thumbs up back there. Uh, does that get us there?
They just don't move the hoop house to the front line.
But the garden itself.
That'll be open-air gardening in the front.
And I'm totally with you, Commissioner, that.
It's the seasonal garden.
The clarity that we walk out of here with is, is, uh, incredibly important.
Might be easier to run the gardens this way so you can move the hoop, hoop house that way instead of having it.
I'd like to throw one, I'd like to throw one other thing out here and I, not to, not to convolute anything, but just so something doesn't come up down the road. And Sean, when we're talking about setbacks, you're thinking from the property line, right? The front property line?
Yes, all setbacks are based from property line.
Right, so we've mentioned sidewalk in here, but we really don't know where the front property line is. In the older parts of town, the front property line could be a few feet back from the sidewalk. It could, it could even be up closer to the curb. But I think on the front setback, we're talking about 20 feet from the property line or the, or the back of the sidewalk, whichever is greater. Would that be the way to say it?
Uh, that's how the code reads for a driveway length. So it allows a vehicle to sit in front of the garage without hanging over the sidewalk. So it's really your choice.
Okay, one, one more thing here. As again, on page eight, it says the applicant has proposed the use of a 5-foot fence as a means of buffering the residential use is next door. And I think I've clarified this with Sean. So it's the property line in the front to the property line in the back that on the sides, there's got to be a 5-foot fence. Am I correct on that?
Uh, correct. The only where that it'll be different is in the first 20 feet where there's not going to be a structure. As far as I understand where we are right now, the maximum height is 4 feet in the first 20 feet for any residential structure. And then your maximum height after that is 6.
All right, so there's going to be fencing on the left and right of it, 4 foot to 20 feet and then 5 foot, the rest, whether it's a new fence or, I don't know. Does he, does it have to be a new fence or is it the fencing that I see in the pictures that's existing already?
As long as it meets a 5-foot requirement and it's existing and not blown over or fallen down, then it would meet the requirement.
A fence and serviceable condition. Okay? You understand? Thank you.
Is a second needed for that?
Can I second a motion?
You said, well, you seconded his motion.
Oh, are you seconding it?
No, you didn't second the amendment, did you?
Is a second needed?
Yes.
The second needs to concur with the amendment.
I'll second your motion of all 15 points.
Oh, wait, okay.
I have to do that?
Or do you have to do that?
Well, he, he made the motion because he did all the findings. And then Lou seconded his motion.
And I amended.
And then you amended it. So the second, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, needs to concur with.
I'd be glad to second, Mr. Ingalls.
But we don't need another second though. All right? Okay. Are we all straight now? Okay, and is there any more discussion? Okay, I think we're ready. Shout out for roll call.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That's longer than I thought it'd go.
Let the roof skip it to us.
We've laid the trail on Market Garden.
Probably scared everyone.
And SP five dash fifteen is approved unanimously.
I wanna learn how to do this.
So now we have a little bit of discussion on ordinance amendment to allow market gardens.
Yes, and the same applicant, Joe Hamilton, is going to make a, a presentation, then I can help answer some questions about that as well.
No, it's the same one. I just need, oh, this is a mini little computer here, isn't it? Oh my gosh, how do I get it to the slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that one, but-
So that one starts that?
Do you know how to go full? Okay.
This is probably easier for you to toggle all these two.
Sure. Oh, okay. Oh, nice, okay. Okay. As you know, market gardens are not currently allowed on residentially zoned lots in the city. As a local residential property and business owner, I would like to request that you, the City Planning Commission, pursue an amendment to the city code to allow for marketing garden on all residentially zoned lots. I have a short and hopefully persuasive presentation. I believe that such an amendment allowing market gardening would be in the city's best interest for the following reasons. Public interest in locally grown foods is widespread and growing across the country and in Coeur d'Alene. Basically, people love the idea of buying food from someone they know, like Ellen Scriven here in this slide from Killarney Farm, because they have a much better chance of knowing how the food was grown. People are increasingly uninterested in buying food from strangers. How did it get, huh? Yeah. Nice to, oh, which one did you push there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. I lost the thunder there. They're increasingly uninterested in buying food from strangers who may be growing their food like this in this image. There's also been a ground swell of gardening activity in recent years, and here are a few pictures of some of our city's landmark community gardens. Local food is good for the environment. Small-scale locally grown food often uses less toxic fertilizing and pest control inputs and travels a shorter distance from farm to fork, thus having a smaller carbon footprint, as they call it, which reduces greenhouse gas emissions. Basically, it's not uncommon for urban market gardeners to deliver their bounty like this on a bicycle instead of like this. Small-scale locally grown food also tends to improve soil fertility with the use of natural and composted material, and are less affected by wind and water erosion because of the small size and more protected nature of the plots. Locally grown foods most certainly spend less time traveling from farm to fork and are, and are therefore much more fresh and nutritious. Urban market, market gardens are also good for the economy, as they create opportunities for so many people to generate a little or even a lot of extra income. And we know that economics translate to jobs and to increased public works and amenities. Take Curtis Stone, for example. Curtis Stone is the owner-operator of Green City Acres, a commercial urban farm based in Kelowna, B.C., not far from here. He farms less than half an acre on a collection of urban plots. Green City Acres grows vegetables for farmers' markets, restaurants, and retail outlets. After five successful seasons, Curtis has demonstrated that one can grow an extraordinary amount of food in a backyard and make a good living doing it. In 2012, he grew over fifty thousand pounds of food on less than one acre of land using one-hundred percent natural and organic methods and only twenty-one gallons of gasoline. He has created an online instructional course, in addition to this book that he's written, that promises to teach people how he earns seventy-five thousand dollars a year on one-third of an acre on multiple plots throughout the city that he doesn't even own. Growing food has become a critical part of the revitalization efforts in cities all across the country. Many of the people using gardens to educate, engage, and inspire the youth, and even the entire community, have gained celebrity status and is totally deserved. Take Stephen Ritz as a prime example. I had the great pleasure of hearing him speak live a month ago and enjoyed perhaps the most inspiring talk of my entire life. Stephen Ritz is a long, a lifelong educator and is currently teaching in the single most poor county in all of America, where ninety-nine percent of the students receive free or subsidized lunches. Everyone has heard of the South Bronx just outside of the city of New York. Stephen noticed, as an educator, that as the waistlines in the classroom expanded, as waistlines expanded, engagement and attendance in, in class contracted. Prior to integrating gardening into the core curriculum of the school, overall attendance was just forty percent and is now ninety-three percent. They've achieved one-hundred percent passing rates on New York State examinations and through community partnerships have created two-thousand two hundred youth jobs. Stephen and, and his students have been invited to prepare food in the White House for the president and his family, and was even flown to Rome by the Pope to honor his outstanding accomplishments. He uses growing food in the classroom and on vacant lots in the city to educate and inspire his students, and, well, I had a one-minute video that is really great. He's really a dynamite speaker, but apparently it's, the technology's not gonna work. But, but I do highly recommend that you check out his efforts. Stephen Ritz is his name. Well, now, I think it's clear that there are a lot of reasons local food is popular and great, but the big question here today is whether or not we need to allow people to grow food on residential lots to achieve these benefits. And I believe the answer is yes. And here are my two reasons. Residentially zoned land is where the people are and where they have the ability to work a garden. Very few people, perhaps less than ten percent even, have access to land zoned for commercial or agricultural purposes. Therefore, ninety percent or more of our community currently do not have the opportunity to operate a small urban market garden and achieve all the benefits I just covered. Number two, the, the slide was missing. My two reasons were people and, and money, I think it was. So here we're onto the first one is people, here we are under the money. Many of the benefits I listed can be accomplished with home gardens that are currently allowed, but I suggest to you that the age-old adage is very true, that people think with their wallets. Many decisions are made based on the ability to make or save money, and allowing people to make some money by gardening could very possibly be just what it takes to ignite a small new industry that does indeed deliver all the benefits I just spoke about. So many businesses have a very high barrier of entry in regards to finances and skills. Just about everyone has some land that they can grow food on, and just about anyone can learn how to garden for market and make extra money, and of course, be a part of our growing local food movement that is sweeping the country. I would like to end by saying that many municipalities across the country have already amended their city code, including Moscow, Idaho, and Spokane, Washington. I would also point out that I do not consider myself the spokesperson on this topic, but I'm just getting the ball rolling. I know that you committee members, the public, and the city council will discover many things that I'm sure I've overlooked, so I'm excited to see where this goes. That's it.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that. Do they even have any questions of Mr. Hamilton?
Actually, I do. If I could, Mr. Hamilton, you said that Spokane and Moscow amended their ordinances, so I'm just thinking out loud, you know, I've been involved in court code enforcement issues in the city for a lot of years, and, you know, I had a neighbor that had, their whole backyard was just absolutely unbelievably lush with everything, food, and I, I didn't really pay any attention whether, I, I'd look at there and go, you couldn't possibly eat all that food, and do they give it away? Or if they sold it, I, I guess really not creating much commotion to me. So in those places, Spokane and Moscow, is the fundamental change in an ordinance such that 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 I grow in my backyard, front yard, whatever, I could, I could sell commercially? Is that, is that the issue?
That's one of the big thrusts, yes. And by the strictest interpretation of the city code, I mean, as I read it and as I've been told, currently, you can't do it. You, you, I mean, if your neighbor is selling it, you're not in compliance.
We see it out in Dalton on Fifteenth, when people put out their, you know, wares on the street.
I was thinking about that.
And I'm not sure what they've got to cover that, but there's lots of carts out there come, you know, August, September.
Seems to me that we had a lot of support for this in front of us, when we didn't even have the market garden defined. It would seem to me that, you know, that we should define it and see what other jurisdictions have and have, ask our planning director to come up with a proposal. I don't know if it comes to us or the city council, but I think we all strongly support something of this nature within, within the proper, you know, criteria and so forth, and whatever that might be. And it just, you know, I mentioned mowing the leaves. I, I do that every year, and I put mulch in the garden. Where I get the leaves from is my grandmother used to grow tomatoes there and sold them to what is now Peterson's Flying Foods. So I'm sitting here in part by money she's made from selling tomatoes here in Coeur d'Alene, so whatever that's worth.
Well, I've noticed this happening around town. There's more and more community gardens that are springing up, and, and I don't know how many market gardens there, there are. It's, it's happening, and this is a trend across the country, so it's unfortunate if our ordinance, you know, doesn't allow it. So it's probably, it sounds like we're going in the same direction here. We probably should look at this and see about amending the ordinance. Hillary, what, what do you think? Do you wanna have somebody do a little bit of research on this for us and give us some information on it, and we'll work, work at this? I guess it's a good time to work at this right now, so it could be ready, you know, for in the spring when people start growing gardens again.
Yes, I think it'd be helpful. We can do a little more research. It's been helpful. Joe's already provided quite a bit of information and other examples of codes. There's also the best practices one that you provided to me. It was on kind of urban farming. It suggests there's, throughout the whole country, there's communities that have done this, and so that's kind of a useful tool that we can look at, and then we can bring forward a proposal. I don't know, would you wanna workshop on it, or would you want us to just bring forward some code amendment proposal for you to consider?
I think I'm open. I guess you can kind of decide if, if you think we need a workshop maybe on it, or what, what you think is the best. If you want, wanna put together a workshop with some interested parties and get some information together. You know, I, I don't know which, which direction this will take you. What do you think?
You know, looking at-
It can't be that difficult. I know there's examples out there for this because it's a growing trend.
The city of Moscow's, I think, is a better example for us than the city of Spokane. The city of Spokane did it more of a pilot project, and it was designed initially to be in their community development block grant neighborhoods, and it was a lot more limited. I think Moscow's makes more sense, and what's nice about theirs is they have market garden allowed outright, but then they have, if you want to sell from your property or do other types of things, that you'd need a special use permit. And I think that's kind of a nice example, because I don't think you wanna have it just outright, because there are concerns, as we discussed tonight, you know, their neighborhood compatibility. So I think we could certainly bring forward something. Why don't, we can present, maybe kind of give an update in December?
Yeah.
On kind of what we've come up with, and then let you know if we think a workshop is appropriate, or if we wanna just come forward with a, a proposed amendment.
Yeah, you could let us know. I think we could go whatever direction this takes you. You're thinking a market garden by right, and I guess they could sell, they could sell if they're selling somewhere, if they're not selling on the site, but they're selling somewhere, I guess that would probably have no impact to the neighborhood.
Correct.
Then you're thinking special use permit if they put up a stand and sell at the site. That makes sense.
Right. And what was interesting about Moscow as well, is they, I think, realized the same thing we did, that they needed to clarify that community gardens were permitted as well as accessory gardens, which is basically just you and I growing our own produce in our yard. So I think that would probably be worth us looking at as well.
And how would that be if someone just had an empty lot? No housing, no nothing, and they, you know, we changed the ordinance. Would they have to come in with any special uses? Is that something we would look into compared to someone that just has a house with a little garden and does something?
So I think it would depend on what it is. And I, so if it's a community garden, and if we had it as allowed by right, they wouldn't need to come in. And if it was a market garden where they were selling off-site, again, probably wouldn't need to come in. But if they did want to do certain events or sell from the site, I think that would trigger a special use permit. That's how I envision it, but we can certainly look into that.
That's what the workshop would let us know about.
I think I have a, curious to find out where this might go to, only because what's to stop it from, you know, something that's gonna be designed or grown for human consumption? I mean, what about plants, trees, you know, nurseries along those lines? They could produce product like that that could be sold out of market, you know, like live Christmas trees or something of that nature.
See some Christmas trees, usually on bigger property. But you got a good point.
I mean, it's-
What if somebody starts growing shrubs and flowers for sale on their property? That's something you could look into, too. He's got a good point.
I mean-
One thing I'll say, when I, when I look at the condition of some of the vacant lots in town and overgrown with weeds and brush and the way some of them look, that probably this would be an improvement aesthetically to have, you know, flower, flowers or vegetables growing on them. Probably look a lot better than some of the vacant lots do right now.
And one point of clarification, too. I don't know if you'd wanna provide it now or if we did do workshop, but on, you know, beekeeping and animal raising, things like that as well. I think those are things we're gonna need to consider.
Yeah. Well, I think that's Peter's area. I just know, I, I know that I, I love honey, but I'm allergic to bee sting, so I stay away from the bees, so.
The reason I raised that, it just seemed to me to be a lot of, my, my thinking was along the lines that it's just like any, you know, piece of property, you plant a bunch of plants on there, and if you wanna have bees, you wanna have bees, you know?
Sometimes they don't wanna stay anyway.
You know, I'm, I'm allergic to bees, too. But I, I just think that, you know, whatever comes back to us is gonna be a great opportunity for more discussion. I think we're all pretty enthused about this. I, I think I can grow Christmas trees on my backyard if I want to, right now.
I think you can.
It'll take me a while to get the time.
It'll be very small.
You know, in seriousness, Hillary, I really don't, I don't know a lot about, you know, bee ordinances. We haven't had a lot of experience with that, but I can see where if someone is, you know, has a family member allergic to bees or something, I could see where maybe if the neighbor has beehives, that could be a concern. So I, I don't know. I don't know if it, I don't, I don't know what you do with that, but.
That's an interesting one, that a lot of communities either don't wanna touch it all and just wanna allow it to occur naturally, where the people that are beekeeping, they follow best practices. But then Los Angeles County just passed the, their ordinance in support of beekeeping, so that was pretty huge. So it probably is worth us looking at it, just to see, because if these larger communities are addressing it-
Yeah.
Because of the importance of bees and-
Pollinate all those citrus trees. You've gotta have them. I hate citrus trees. You've gotta have bees, or you don't have pollination.
Sometimes if it isn't a problem, you don't wanna make a problem out of it. So anyway, yeah, just take a look at that and see what you think on that.
Mr. Maybe a bigger issue will be the damage deer will do to any of these things.
Well, yeah, when we were talking about Mr. Hamilton's garden and the four-foot fence in the front, I, I'm thinking I'd be putting the maximum six-foot fence in, because we've got these urban deer that are growing here now. So if you're going to get any vandalism problems in your, in your garden, it's probably gonna be from the deer and not the humans.
All right.
Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate that. That was great.
Thank you.
We'll get to work on that and give that some serious consideration. Good luck with your venture.
I think Hillary's eager to work on it.
Okay, so we got a- Okay, so we got a meeting coming up in December. Motion for adjournment?
Sure, I think we had an individual wanted to approach us with a comment.
I haven't forgot her, but I need to adjourn the meeting first, I think.
Oh, well, before we adjourn it, each month is sort of significant, well, to all of us. By the way, November is Veterans Armistice Day tomorrow, and there's a ceremony down at McEwen Field at eleven o'clock, and I mentioned the Leaf Fest, which I, I think we're a very unique community, have the city pick up our leaves, and I, I just, I'm very, very strong on that. And then, of course, Thanksgiving, and then my wife's favorite is the day after, the Friday after Thanksgiving, when she's in Christmas shop, so November's pretty nice. Thank you.
Okay, motion for adjournment.
Does it move?
Motion by Lutrip?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a second by Fleming, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're adjourned, thank you very much.